Okay. Welcome to the May 1st, 2017 council study session. And this is our new council study session which meets for two hours. And there is no public comment. Public comment will be tomorrow night. So, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, first item on the agenda is a discussion with the council on the sign code update. I'll turn things over to Jeff Thomas, our Community Development Director.
Great. Thank you, Lyman. Good afternoon, council. Couple of quick introductory comments, and then I'm going to turn it over to the staff table for a presentation. This afternoon, we're going to have a study session on the sign code updates. And then tomorrow evening, you will complete a public hearing on the same subject. And then we'll be moving forward into next week to begin deliberations. So, that's generally the schedule. I think that will get recapped at the end of our presentation today as well. But the Planning Commission completed its recommendations a few weeks ago now. And we do have our Vice Chair Larry Crandall in the audience this afternoon, who's on call to answer any questions you may have of the Planning Commission. And I believe our Chair, Shannon Collins, will be present tomorrow night for the public hearing. She wasn't available this afternoon. So, with that, I'm just going to introduce our staff here quickly. It's the triple, Team Triple D over there at the staff table. David Pyle, David Goodman in the middle, and Doug McIntyre on the end. So, with that, I'm going to have David Goodman kick off the presentation, I believe. And we'll walk you through a relatively short set of slides here, and certainly be able to answer any questions that you may have, or we'll make note of them and come back to you with the answers if we don't know off the top of our head. With that, David, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Good afternoon, city council members. So, the goals of our presentation today on the sign code update include reviewing the context of the sign code update. So, why are we, why are we going through this to begin with? And what are some of the issues that we've been dealing with? We're going to identify some of the key decision points that we think the council will be most interested in deliberating upon over the next couple of weeks. We're also going to clarify the scope of the project by identifying what it is that we are taking up and other items, and identifying other items that have come up over the course of these deliberations, but that we feel are better suited to have, to be their own work plan item in the future. And finally, answer any questions you might have about any of the above and anything else you might be interested in.
That's a great picture, by the way.
Except it doesn't have my sign.
Doesn't it say Alberta?
Yeah.
I believe it's from Canada, maybe.
Yes, Alberta.
So, a quick, one-slide-long reminder of why we're here. The most pressing issue is related to the Supreme Court case of Reed versus Town of Gilbert. There is Mr. Gilbert with, or Mr. Reed, excuse me, with the offending sign. The Supreme Court case, which was decided in 2015, found that content-based sign regulations are an unconstitutional restriction on free speech, which basically means that you cannot, you can no longer treat different types of non-commercial speech in different ways when it comes to regulating them. So, I'll get into this in a moment. But, for example, the Sammamish Municipal Code had separate regulations pertaining to political signs that were different from how the code regulated community event signs that were different from fundraising signs. So, that's a textbook example of content-based sign regulation that is no longer permissible. And just as a reminder, this applies only to non-commercial speech and not to commercial speech. In addition to making some changes to the code to bring it into compliance with Reed v. Gilbert, we also did a fair amount of code cleanup. That includes dealing with expired pilot programs, trying to make clear some confusing or redundant regulations that were in there. And finally, improving the enforcement mechanisms that the city has to make sure that the code is being properly administered on a day-to-day basis. So, to give you a little more of a visual idea of where we're going here, so you can generally break up our sign regulations into commercial and non-commercial. The areas that we're really focusing on here are in the temporary non-commercial side. And we have also touched upon the temporary real estate signs as well, which is the only type of commercial temporary sign the city allows. And I'll touch on that a little bit later. So, I'll outline the three key decision points that we think that the council will be most interested in. The first has to do with our proposed regulations for non-commercial temporary signs. As I mentioned, the city had a couple of problematic provisions in there, problematic in the context of Reed v. Gilbert, of course. So, what we have proposed are, is this new framework for regulating temporary non-commercial signs that takes forward many of the regulations that were previously in place for the political community event and fundraising signs, but presents them in such a way that is content-neutral, but that will also hopefully allow people to continue express, being able to express their free speech rights in a way that is mostly similar to how they were before. But we do anticipate that the council would like to discuss the different size and duration limits that we've proposed here. So, for example, you know, we have a four-square-foot sign size limit for non-A-frame signs in the right-of-way. That might be a number that the council's interested in talking more about. Secondly, the Planning Commission was very interested in ways to deter sign pollution. So, what we discussed with them and what they ultimately recommended was not allowing any non-commercial temporary signs within the right-of-way, in a, within a 150-foot radius of the center of any intersection. So, the decision points here are going to include, A, if the council agrees that deterring sign pollution is a priority. If it is, and they agree with the idea of having a sign-free, or non-commercial temporary sign-free radius, as it matters to the right-of-way, of course, should, do they, do you like that 150, 150-foot size? Or should it be smaller? Should it be bigger? And should the radius begin somewhere other than in the middle of the intersection is another issue as well? And if the council has some other ideas about how to deter sign pollution, we're certainly interested in those as well. And third is the community banner program. This is also related to Reed v. Gilbert. The, essentially, there are some risks involved with any direction in which the council would like to go on this. The Planning Commission recommendation was to limit the use of the community banner program to city-sponsored and hosted events only. Currently, it's open to any 501(c)(3) organization. The options before the council here are, would be anywhere from terminating the program to co-opting the program for government speech, as the Planning Commission recommended. The council could open up the program to all non-commercial messages, or the, or the council could decide to leave the program as it is. Again, all of those come with different risks, but they're all, they're all on the table. And separately but relatedly, another question might be whether the council wishes to keep the option of expanding the banner program to other locations. In the Planning Commission's recommended draft code, the community banner regulations were moved to 21B, which is the Town Center Development Code, because the one location where the community banners currently are is within the boundaries of Town Center. However, the council has the option to leave the banner regulations in 21A in the case that there might be a future location for another community banner pole. One other thing I want to touch on briefly are what we're now calling signs associated with properties for sale or rent, formerly known as real estate signs. As I mentioned, temporary real estate signs are allowed. They must all be on private property with three exceptions. The first exception is for properties for sale without public street frontage, in which case the property owner is allowed to place a for-sale sign at the nearest exit of their property that is, that intersects with public streets. The second is for active open houses. Those are just directional signs when there is an open house going on that can be placed in the right-of-way. And then the last category are directional signs for newly constructed residential developments. That was, there were formerly six signs allowed under that category, but in the Planning Commission's recommended draft, we've reduced that to two. So, as, and so that was the, that's a good, that's a summary of what we have brought to you and what we think is going to be most of interest to you as you deliberate on this topic. I also want to point out two items that have come up, come up numerous times with the Planning Commission and, but that we feel are better addressed as separate work items. The first is the electronic reader board program, which was originally included in the code as a pilot program, starting in 2009. That expired in 2014. And I know that this is an area that is going to be a priority for the staff coming up. So, if I'm correct, I think that we're going to be taking on this issue right after the sign, right after we wrap up this other sign code update, especially given that one of the three high schools that was included in the original pilot program did not put up a sign. And we also have Central Washington coming in as well, and they are interested in a similar sign as well. The second issue is public art and murals. The proposed draft code doesn't change the way that public art and murals are regulated in the city. However, there has been a lot of community interest in this particular issue. So, we'll probably hear from some people tomorrow at the, at the public hearing about this. But just to be clear, we're not changing anything with public art and murals. And if that's something that the council's interested in talking more about, it's best left as a separate work item in the future. So, a quick summary of where we're going on this topic. We have our study session this evening. Tomorrow, we will have our first reading and public hearing. We have another study session a week from tomorrow, on the 9th. And then finally, we're scheduled for a second reading and adoption on the 16th. And just so you're also aware, we know that this is an area of the code that a lot of regular citizens interact with on a daily basis. So, we're going to be sure to create some materials once the final code is set, so that citizens know what the rules are, they're familiar with how they can be in compliance. And the same goes for the staff here, when, for both code enforcement and for providing sign permits and things like that. That's all I have.
And then, thank you, David. Great presentation. In closing, for that May 9th session that I mentioned at the, the top of the item here, what we'd like to do is, we started developing many of the things that David mentioned during his presentation, a very simple spreadsheet that we'd like to have the council work off of for your deliberations. So, between this afternoon and tomorrow evening, any additions to that list, anything that you would like to talk about during deliberations, we want to compile onto that simple spreadsheet that will provide counsel for May 9th in advance. And similar to the Shoreline Master Program that we worked through last year with some amendments, we kind of used a spreadsheet format for that, seemed to work quite well, easy to reference. And we'll look forward to working with the council through your deliberations and different ideas that come up. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Tom?
Yes. I want to better understand, well, I guess, put it on the list, the type 2A frames limited to two days and the rationale for why it's limited to two days? Or I guess, better understand the Planning Commission's recommendation in that regard. Because that, is that different than what it was?
It is different than what it was. I think previously, community event signs were allowed to be up for a max of 21 days and needed to be taken down within seven days of the conclusion of the event. The two-day limit we put in there, the thinking was just that these are meant to be quite temporary signs. They're not meant to be out there for a long time, since they're going to be associated with specific events. But again, that's, that's something that we expect there to be some debate on, and we're happy to.
Okay. Well, I'll just say, put it on the list, then, I guess.
Yeah. And I think there had been a council comment leading up to today in reference to the nightmare event, Nightmare at Beaver Lake. Historically, I believe we've advertised for that event longer than two consecutive days. So, I think that's a great discussion for council to have during your deliberations. And we'll work through that and see what we come up with.
Okay. Second item that I'd like to put on the list is the differences of size on private property, whether it's within 50 feet or greater than 50 feet. Because it's, within 50 feet, it's 16 square feet, and then it goes to 32 if it's more than 50 feet from the right-of-way, correct? So, I'll just say, let's add that to the list for discussion, if we could.
Okay.
The 1,500-foot sign pollution?
150.
150.
150, sorry. Typo. That I wrote. I'd add that to the list, too. I'm concerned about that, just from a, a free speech. And I want to make clear for everybody that that is not driven by Gilbert and Reed. Is that the case? Gilbert, yeah. That, that was a Planning Commission recommendation, as I understand it, just from a sign pollution. And I'm all against sign pollution, but I'm also all for free speech on some of those type of signs that, that they want to be at the intersection. And I guess the only other question I have for staff is, for the electronic reader board that you said you're going to start right away, how much, what does that entail? How much time is that going to take? Do you know right now, or what are the issues? Is it just adding two more, Central Washington and East Side Catholic? Or is it the parameters around that, or what?
So, that's a great question. My understanding is, from the pilot project, we do have a little bit of follow-up we need to do from that, primarily surrounding, I believe, retrieving accident data that may or may not be associated with those electronic reader board signs. So, we need to do that. And then primarily, I think we need to work with, in conjunction with our legal counsel, to go through a, somewhat of a microcosm of the process we've just went through to look at our code, look at the existing code from the pilot program, and to make sure in bringing electronic reader boards back as permitted signs in certain situations that it'll be in compliance with Reed Gilbert and any other provisions that we need to look at in reference to that. So, I don't anticipate it's going to be a large project.
But it's not two days either. Okay. That's what I wanted to better.
It's not two days. We, we will need to bring it back through the Planning Commission as an initiated code amendment. And, but, so we have public noticing requirements for a public hearing, for example. But I think we can design a process that will be timely and effective as well, so.
Okay. Good. I will make one comment, that staff is trying hard to meet my deadline, and I'd like to have that back to the council for consideration prior to the August recess.
Good.
Okay.
Ramiro?
Yeah, and I'd like to reiterate Tom Hornish's comment, and particularly, I'm forward of the free speech and opening it up. I'm also curious, the Gilbert and Reed decision had nothing to do with the signs being 16 or 50 feet, correct? That was, again, another decision just by the Planning Commission and their recommendation. So, I'd like to have a discussion and understand where that's coming from and the logic of how that would even be applied, given the 50 feet. There are few places you can place anything 50 feet from most roads. So, that's something I would like to understand, that whole logic process that came in. There is also a discussion, and I think we had talked about it in our discussion, as far as signs for community service organizations, that it might be handled as street signage for organizations like the Kiwanis, the Rotaries, Knights of Columbus, Lions. So, I'd like to see where they fall into this process, or how they will be handled as we're looking at this. And then, the other thing for consideration, when we were looking at that circle, to take into account and discuss, we already have regulations that are unique to Sammamish that are not done by King County and Redmond to avoid distractions of traffic, like not putting signs in the medians and that. And so, how that comes into play, given the other rules that are already in effect in Sammamish that are unique to us here.
What, if I may, one quick clarification of your comments, the, when you mentioned Kiwanis and Rotary, perhaps, that's the, the gateway signs you were making reference to? Gateway signage into the city?
Yeah, they have some signs from years that have been stored, that they've been trying to get up. But I understand that there might be an easier way just to handle them, like street signs or that.
Yeah. Okay. I just want to make sure I was understanding that, that's what that was. Yeah.
Kristi?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to find out, did the Planning Commission get much public feedback when they were talking about this? I mean, I watched some of them online, but did they get much feedback?
In general?
Yes.
Yeah.
That would help shape these.
David Goodman, do you want to comment on that briefly?
We got mostly issue-specific feedback, I would say. Nothing too general. Again, there was a lot of, there was some concern about public art and murals. We had somebody from East Side Catholic come to talk about the electronic reader board issue. And then we had a representative from Sam Platt, who was interested in the status of their mural on their water tank over here. But as for things like the 150-foot radius with no temporary non-commercial signs, we did not get much feedback about that.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I, I would echo what Council Member Hornish said about that 150-foot radius and not allowing signage in there. But one of the questions that you posed in your presentation was, if we're not interested in doing that, are we interested in other methods of deterring sign pollution? I'd be interested in hearing if there were recommendations to that end, and just maybe exploring those. I'm cognizant that a lot of our residents don't care for a lot of the political signs that end up popping up. I would be one of those offenders, as would everyone probably sitting up here at this table.
But mine are aesthetically pleasing.
So, but it goes back to the free speech thing, but I also want to be cognizant of what our, our residents desire. And so, I'm just curious if there are suggestions that, as you mentioned, that might deter sign pollution. I'd just be curious to hear what those are. And then, this goes back to my last question, the real estate signs and allowing just two directional signs, was that something that was just hatched from the Planning Commission? Or did they get specific public feedback on that?
That was also internally developed.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Bob?
Thank you. For sake of brevity, I agree with a lot of the questions that were here, so I just really had a couple of other ones. One was the banner. Just, I'd like to see a little discussion around the, the local nonprofits and the city participation or the support, what that qualification is for nonprofit to be able to be on the banner. And actually, around, I'd like to hear a little bit of how the discussion was between limiting it only to the Town Center and the one that we have, as opposed to the possibility, would there be any effect if we just opened up the possibility of other ones, but didn't necessarily do it or implement it right now? Would that have any implications just to have that opportunity? And then the last one, the question going back, I wanted to emphasize the no signs on the corners or within 150 feet. I'd also like to hear some discussion of alternatives of the 150 feet. There may have been a number of proposals by the Planning Commission. For instance, could you limit it to certain intersections? You know, with a certain number of cars that go by, or something like that? Were there any alternatives other than just 150 feet? Because as I was reading that, it was 150 feet from any intersection. And maybe, maybe there are some other options that they discussed as well.
Yeah, those are great questions. As Ramiro mentioned a moment ago, we already have that no signage regulation in our medians and roundabouts. We'll, we can certainly bring back, as part of your discussion, other options, and perhaps only certain types of streets or certain types of intersections and so forth. So, good question. Yeah.
Tom?
Well, I'll plead guilty to being a polluter along with the other six of us up here in the past. One thing I did not hear anything about in this presentation was the time limit on the political sign question. We had talked about this offline. But the, the issue of how long they stay up is something I think is worth diving into as we get into this.
That is in the pocket for tomorrow.
Right, I know. The, the other thing, though, is, excuse me, with respect to the banners, I do feel that we need to change how we're doing that. There've been some banners that gone up that basically have verged on the issue of separation of church and state. And I think that is something that we want to avoid. By having it restricted to city-sponsored organizations only, I think we take care of that. With respect to the murals, I love the trees painted on the water tanks around town. After having sat through the discussion on ways to camouflage cell towers, I think we need to retain that type of feature for some of the bigger things, including the walls of some of the tanks, the stormwater tanks that are popping up around town. That could be another area of activity. With respect to the non-commercial signs, I think we need to take a look at that. And by non-commercial, I'm including things like sports leagues, tutoring services, that kind of thing, that tend to pop up with great regularity around town. And in many cases, are there well after all the other signs are down. With regard to real estate signs, do, I'm going to ask a question, do we want to take a look at the weekend signs that pop up? There are stakes all over town that get decorated every weekend with developers' signs. And if you drive 228th, frankly, they are there every weekend, 52 weeks a year. And I think we need to look at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. A couple, couple additional questions. One was on the banners that Tom brought up. I wonder if legal can give us a clarification of how broad we can have for the category of hosted or approved by the city? Because if we can have it pretty broad, I'm not worried about the separation of church and state. If, if there's a Catholic school that has a good community event and wants to put a banner up, I, I think that could be sponsored, co-sponsored by the city, or can it? That's, that's a question for, I don't know if it's a question for legal today or not.
I'm happy to speak briefly about that. Would you mind going back to that slide? Thank you. So, as David mentioned, the city has sort of four options as it relates to the banner program. And the one that you were mentioning is this sort of government speech option, that government-sponsored events could be advertised on the banner. Unfortunately, looking at that more closely, government speech would be restricted exclusively to things that the city says and does. So, it would be city events, city messages, announcements about upcoming council meetings, or the example that you see on the slide, the virtual town hall. If we were to, if the council were to opt to go the government speech route, the safest and clearest delineated path would be restricting it to city messages and city events. So, it would not be a matter of co-sponsoring specific events with outside organizations. The city would have the option of doing that, as it has now, to, to sponsor events with outside organizations. But to do so and to avoid the misuse of funds concerns, the city would have to adopt by resolution a sponsorship of each individual event or message that it was sponsoring. And there's a criteria, a list of criteria upon which the city would have to make that determination, the city council. So, that route would be an option available to you, but it would require those additional steps for sort of co-sponsoring with outside organizations.
I'm sorry, I'm confused about the misuse of funds. We're not saying that we would pay for the banner. The organization would pay for the banner.
If the city were to put its name on the, and offer that as advertisement for the event, that is a form of use of funds that can potentially draw concern on that, on that point, yes.
So, this is on the Reed versus Gilbert issue?
That actually comes from before the Reed versus Gilbert issue. The Reed versus Gilbert triggers a concern with the program as it exists because it chooses amongst the content. So, as the city's current program is described in its code, it limits it to particular types of content. And that's what comes from Reed v. Gilbert.
But what you're saying is Reed v. Gilbert excludes government categories from that? Is that what you're saying?
No, I, I wouldn't say that's what I'm saying. I would say government speech and the concept of government speech predates Reed v. Gilbert. of government speech predates Reed v. Gilbert, and Reed v. Gilbert doesn't interfere with the concept of government speech. It's its own doctrine.
Right.
That's standalone. And once you, when the city speaks, it can essentially control the message, so the content distinction isn't relevant in that sort of analysis.
So, where would we get arguments about the government sponsoring an event? Is it in the, not the Reed v. Gilbert, but the previous?
It would come from a whole body of law relating to city funding of outside events, city funding of church events, those sorts of things, yeah.
Recommended not to go there.
Well, there's just, there's definitely liability there, but there is liability with every of these categories, so.
I would comment that the city has taken on co-sponsorship for public purpose, and we have felt comfortable with that, and we have a process for that, for that.
Like the Sammy Awards?
The Sammy Awards, the Sammamish Knights, things like that, that have a community-government focus as well. So, there, as Charlotte mentioned, there are ways to work through that, basically by having council create policy that specifically says this particular program is co-sponsored by the government and serves a public purpose.
Exactly.
Okay.
Would that be option four? I'm just trying to categorize it. That's lead program as is? Is that, I mean, that's currently what we're doing?
No, that would be number two. It'd be co-opting the program for government speech.
And then it becomes, what is government speech, I guess? Okay.
Yes, and government speech would be when the government speaks, and then sort of secondary to that would be your sponsorship of events, that is you speaking, because you have taken the action of sponsoring an event in the manner that the city manager described, yeah.
Okay. Tom?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, looks like no other comments for tonight.
Just one quick clarification, going back to one of Tom Odell's comments from a few minutes ago. He mentioned the length of time for the temporary non-commercial signs, and you specifically mentioned the 180 days. So, that, can Doug or David, can you flip back to that slide? It was on one, it was on this slide here in the presentation, but I think we omitted bringing it up specifically in the actual oral part of the presentation. So, you see it there on the left-hand column of that, that graphic. That's the non-commercial temporary type-one signs, 180 consecutive days. I think some of the, some of the thinking and the recommendation on that was political signs are in that category, and the idea was, was 180 days would cover from, generally speaking, filing deadline time in the spring to general election runoff in the fall. So, to the extent council is interested in having a conversation about that, whether that's the right amount of time, or whether it should be more or less, we'll put that on the list as well.
I think it's worth talking about, Jeff. My own experience is signs that I put out in advance of what might have been a primary date, by the time primary rolled around, many, if not most of them, had disappeared. So, they tend to clean themselves up in a sense. But if there is some concern among the citizens about visual pollution, that may be one way of dealing with it more effectively than, say, a 150-foot arc around an intersection.
Very good. It'll be on the spreadsheet.
Now, there's no limit of how many political signs you can put out.
No.
So, there would be no limit on any other non-commercial signs either, would there?
Correct.
Boy, that could be messy.
Limit currently either, so.
Well, I know, I know. I'm surprised that people haven't taken advantage of that. Oops, I shouldn't have mentioned that. Okay, any other comments for today? No? Well, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, the next discussion's on regional stormwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll, we'll let the, the next team transition into the desk. Okay, great. And this, this particular team is led by Kelly Hildy, our project manager, and we are doing a follow-up from the April 3rd council meeting. We had a study session, and that particular night, we went a little bit late, so we weren't able actually to finish off and have further discussion related to this. So, we're calling this part two, and so we wanted to come back and touch base with council and continue the conversation and perhaps finish parts of it. I will also point out that the April 3rd meeting, we did have a technical issue, and so we lost most of the audio for that particular evening. We had a part, basically, that failed. Was broadcast appropriately, both on Channel 21 and streaming, but we were not able to retain that particular file. So, our apologies to everyone, but that is the story behind it. So, without further ado, Kelly, please take it away.
Well, thank you, Mr. City Manager, council, for having us back so soon after our last presentation on regional stormwater. As our city manager mentioned, we're continuing that conversation from April 3rd, and so tonight, before I hand this off, I'd like to introduce to you again, Paul Fusel is our, is with KPG, our town center consultant, and he will be leading the presentation tonight, and he is joined by Jeff Orango with Burke. And with that, I hand it off to you.
Thank you, Kelly. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. So, in our continuing discussion, April 3rd was an open discussion to try to talk about the site, the sub-basins for storm drainage, some of the issues around that related to geology and things of that nature, and then a discussion around how other cities have dealt with stormwater and their town centers. We focused on the cities of Bothell, Redmond, and Issaquah to show the sorts of facilities that they did, all custom to each of their town center districts, and then just talked about the feasibility of doing it within Sammamish Town Center. So, today, what we want to do is continue in a little bit different context. In order to get regional stormwater implemented, this really will need to be a partnership with the development community. Currently, all of the regional storm, excuse me, all the stormwater is being done by private development, but there are some good reasons to implement regional stormwater, and I'll go through those today. The questions that we want to address, kind of in the big picture of our work on regional stormwater, is whether or not we should continue a dialogue with the development community to see what opportunities might arise where it makes sense from a city point of view to develop these facilities. And with that, then, of course, comes down to funding these and looking at the options on a case-by-case basis with the facilities. And we do want to have this, this chance and opportunity to ask you if there's specific elements that you would like to get more information on as we move this forward. This graphic, again, just kind of shows that the city's got a 10-year commitment now with the town center, and stormwater is one of the important facets that the town center needs to address and for it to come to fruition. When we look at regional stormwater, there's a series of advantages. The primary one is the higher assurance of maintenance with these facilities. You can, you can imagine that if every single facility that's done by private developers put in town center, that there's going to be a whole number of these facilities, and if we can create some regional ones, it's going to be a little bit easier for the city to maintain those larger facilities. That will incur probably smaller construction costs, particularly with open ponds. That will also provide long-term maintenance or reduction of that in operating costs. If we do these facilities, they can really become an amenity for a recreation, passive recreation, and help a sense of place and neighborhood character get established within town center, and the overall effect is improved water quality. Some disadvantages to consider is timing, that these facilities should be in place so that development can plug into them. There'll be upfront capital costs that the city would need to bring forward to develop these larger facilities. There needs to be land acquisition, because many of these facilities where they would need to be sited, the city currently doesn't own, and that, of course, then means a lot of coordination with property owners. So, these disadvantages, though, can be turned into advantages, because in a partnership context, working with developers, for them, stormwater's a cost and a liability, because they have to build onsite detention, and if they could actually do something that works in tandem with multiple phases of development, that's advantageous for them. So, a lot of these issues around timing, capital costs, land acquisition can all be done in a partnership means. So, a lot of today's discussion is whether or not we keep open the opportunity to look for these situations to occur. This particular diagram shows existing facilities and highlighting Plateau 120, the village at Sammamish and Southeast Villages. They all have subterranean concrete vaults, and so there's a life cycle to those vaults. There is a maintenance issue with private development making sure that they're operating properly, and the city will be, you know, kind of overseeing the NPDES permits to make sure that water quality coming out of these facilities is being maintained. If we looked at it from the concept of full development, you might get a diagram like this, and this is strictly conceptual, where you would have all sorts of different vaults and facilities of different scales that might be implemented with potential development scenarios. The real issue for the city is the enforcement and compliance, that you would need to have staff overseeing that these are actually meeting NPDES permits. There is the potential effect for town center character, depending on how those facilities are established onsite. For developers, the issue they're going to have is whether or not it integrates for the best and highest use for their development. So far, that hasn't been an issue, but in some parts of town center, it could be, and it will take, again, compliance efforts to make sure that, that it works right. So, in this concept, this next slide, this shows the potential of reducing the number of facilities within town center, and that some of those could be publicly-led, a city-led, so that we can cite these with development, so that they become a public amenity and help establish character within the town center and get cited so that they fit within the environment. And with those larger facilities, reduce the maintenance costs that would be incurred. So, one big facet that we know that council's interested in is if it was to become a public facility, how do these get paid? I think before I go into any detail around the list, I want to mention that regional stormwater will be opportunistic where it makes sense within the potential development scenarios that might occur in the future, so that we're not sure how many regional facilities would get established over time, so there isn't a particular number in mind. The diagram that's on this slide shows the sub-basins and how, if the city was to move forward with developments, how we might come up with six or seven of these regional facilities. But we do know that this isn't a partnership sort of scenario if the city was to take a lead. Now, the funding options on this slide are kind of the exhaustive list of things that could be viable, some more than others. This next slide takes that list, and it starts to take a look at who the contributors are for that funding source, as well as the timeline, which could be anywhere from six months to 24 months. So, depending on what a development phase might look like to actually get their development in the ground, this could work tandem with certain sorts of funding versus others. And I think, again, the important thing is, regional stormwater can be a partnership opportunity with the private development community. We do know through previous discussions that they are curious as to whether the city is open to that, and there is no specifics yet in mind, but we do know from the maintenance point of view, the oversight point of view, it still makes a lot of sense to keep this as an open opportunity for town center. A couple of case studies that we looked at at the previous meeting on April 3rd include downtown Bothell and also the Overlake District that Redmond is developing. In the Bothell regional stormwater facility, the Horse Creek Channel costs about $18 million. That's a custom design for direct discharge into the Sammamish River. That's going to be paid over a 20-year bond period. There are connection charges for each development that come onboard, but it will also be a utility rate increase across the city with about a 50% capital cost recovery. In the case of the Redmond facility, that's essentially paid by private funding with 100% capital recovery. That's a very large structure of $30 million. What we're looking at for the, the ponds that we've discussed previously is a range of $7.5 to $10.5 million per facility, so it depends on how many facilities come through over time within town center. And that then leads us back to these questions of whether we should continue on this exploration of regional stormwater and look for opportunities with development, and whether, if we do that, then continue looking at financing options on a case-by-case custom exercise with locating the facility, and then if you have any additional questions, that we can seek out that information for you.
Okay. Kristi, you're first.
So, back on the first map that you showed, where you had the existing and conceptual, this one, right, oop, there. I'm, I'm looking at the, the red rectangles that you have on the east side of 228th, and it looks like they're all like on a per parcel basis. Now, I don't know, you know, what STCA or what any other developers have acquired, but I'm going to assume that some of those parcels, will any of those parcels be merged? And so, is this maybe a little, are there more there than what might actually be?
There's probably more than there, than might actually happen. For the sake of not knowing exactly how it's going to develop, we did put just facilities on a per parcel basis, so it really does depend on how developments come together. Theoretically, STCA, if they move forward on a large phase, could put in a facility the size of a regional facility. So, it doesn't discount that potential, but right now, with existing developments that are in the ground, those facilities are just cited for that particular piece of development. And we haven't heard anything from any of the development community that they're themselves taking a lead to put in a larger facility.
Okay. I mean, I like the idea of the improved water quality, but I'm also concerned about the price tag associated with the city taking the lead on it. And I know I'd asked this before, and I think this is why I tried to go back to reference our discussion from that April 3rd meeting, was, was STCA could themselves take on this project and do it, and then charge latecomer fees to anyone else? Is that correct?
Well, they would probably just develop their facilities for their site. For them to develop on their site for other people to connect in would be perhaps a potential, but I don't think it's on their radar screen to be providing a stormwater facility for other.
Have they been approached about doing a regional stormwater system for their acres that they've amassed? Are they amenable to that, or they haven't been approached on the topic?
Yes, we've met, met with STCA, and we've discussed regional stormwater, and they would like to look at a regional facility. We've asked them, would that also include private development? So, those conversations, or other private development outside of their area. That conversation has started, and we'd like to continue that conversation, and that would be where the city partnership would come in, designing a large facility, not just for one development, but inclusive of others as well, so we can condense those numbers.
So, then, is there a mechanism for the city to charge a latecomer fee, then?
Yes, there is.
And then recoup any money that we would have?
Absolutely, and that's what we'd like to further explore, how we could go about that.
All right, thank you.
Tom O.
Tom O.
Following up on the latecomer thing, one of the considerations there is the fact the city would have to upfront the capital costs and deal with the interest involved in that. This map that we have in front of us right now is interesting in that it tends to keep the rainwater within the geographic, rough geographic limits of where it fell. One concern that I have is that, for better or worse, we're plowing the Town Center right on top of the watershed for just about every sensitive creek in the city. And one of the things we have to do is to maintain the natural groundwater feed to these streams. So, that is probably a major criteria in the number and location of the stormwater facilities. And I'm not sure how much we know about that particular flow impact at this point. With regard to the, and if you look at the other picture that shows the consolidated one, you'll see the options for infiltration are less than with the more scattered thing. I'm assuming we can work around that, although assumptions can be dangerous. The, if you go back to the three questions, yeah, those, in my book, item number one is a yes. Item number two, also a yes. And going now, not later. Item number three, a couple of things. Again, the impact on the groundwater levels, more needs to be done on that. And then, to Kristi's point on costs, what are the costs of these different options? Thank you.
Good, thanks, Tom. TH.
Yeah, I'll go to the questions right away. Yes, yes, but I'd like to look at other financing options than just the public-private partnership. I think that's a great place to kind of have a lion's share. And then the last one, I don't have any other things to think about. But having said that, I think this is the epitome of what we, as a city, need to decide and to take a leadership role to say, here's how we want the city to be developed. And I am way beyond even saying that we need to have regional stormwater treatment in city center. It's all about financing. The principle for me in financing is that I don't think we should be paying for it whatsoever, but I, in general, I think I'm willing, as a city, to take that leadership role and finance that if we need to put the capital into it, but we need to get it back at some way, at some point. So, for us to take the leadership role, to have the character that our citizens want, and for us to treat the environment the way it needs to be treated, that's our role. If the cost of that is a financing, the interest that we have to pay on the upfront capital, I'm okay with that. I'll just say, put that out there for myself. But I think that's what we, as a city, need to take the leadership in.
Good, thank you. Romero.
Yeah, no, I think that Councilmember Hornish was quite eloquent in saying the need for us to take a leadership role here in answering the questions. Number one, yes. Number two, yes. Number three, I would follow Hornish in saying the need for us to take the leadership in the design and how it's being organized and financed. I had asked at the last meeting, though, the one piece that hasn't been answered to me, was similar to Southeast Fourth. There was concerns in Southeast Fourth that because of our frontage, we were paying for Southeast Fourth, for our frontage, when it was caused by the development. And in my eyes, the development should have paid for all of it, given they were the cause of it. I want to make sure that even if we were to front the money here, that all costs that are due to this taking place because of the development should be accrued and paid for by the developers. Growth pays for growth. It's not growth causes other people to have to pay for the growth that they're doing. So, I'd like to understand what are the implications of the city's portions there and to ensure that the city is not like the roads, which I thought was wrong, picking up those costs. But to take the leadership and having latecomer fees come on, I would be willing to explore that. And a private-public partnerships, I'd be willing to explore that. Thank you.
Okay. Bob.
Thank you. I would agree with many of the things that have just been said. I agree with the regional stormwater. It seems like it's really probably the best thing to do, not only as a use of the individual properties, but protecting the environment. The caution I would have when we were, when I was hearing about cost, that we, while we want to take the leadership role, we also don't want to run down a road that puts us in a situation where this is the one option and then it winds up costing us money. I think we need to draw the line that has been pointed out right now, that we're not looking at incurring all the cost. If there's a plan that comes up that shows how it can be paid over time for us to recoup it, that would be good. But I think the understanding should be that when you're going down this route, that you're evaluating it, that we're not looking to expose the community to a bunch of costs that would normally be absorbed by the developer. And if there were some issues that the city might incur some costs, then we would see alternatives, not just one alternative. We would see an option that we could look at, not just one.
Good. Kristi.
Yeah, I wanted to get clarification, just because Councilmember Valderrama made a point about Southeast Fourth, but Steve, I'm going to look to you. We will recoup those fees for frontage improvements, will we not, from developers as they come in?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. Steve Von Ashesky, Public Works Director. So, not having any history with the financing of Southeast Fourth, I know Andrew is in the room, or was in the room. He disappeared. I don't recall what percent that project was concurrency funded, right? But I would guess more than 90, because Sahali was an older one and it's 80, what was the number, 87-ish? So, in that sense, it is a traffic impact fee eligible project. So, traffic fees pay into the system deficiencies which we are improving. The development community pays those fees. So, it is, again, I don't have any history, but I don't know if City Manager has any history on that, but that's my take. They are paying for it, and they will pay for it over time because those fees continue to come in, right? So...
Growth does pay for growth, but growth cannot pay for 100%.
Right.
Growth cannot pay for current deficiencies, but to the largest extent possible, it's been the council's policy to have growth pay for growth.
In the case of Southeast Fourth, I think a lot of the delta between the impact fees and the total cost is actually going to be covered by the PSRC grid.
Quite a bit of that, yes. And then, frontage improvements, also the developers along the way either pay impact fees or they get credit for the frontage improvements that they do make. So, that's how it's being financed.
Okay. Romero, you had something?
Yeah, Doug, a question, because I understood when we were talking with the former City Manager, Ben Yezigi, that the frontage part of our property of the city, that we were going to be, the city was going to be picking up those costs for the frontage piece that was Southeast Fourth. That was at least his position that was going forward. Additionally, as we start to look at the model that Redmond had, Redmond, when they did the Town Center, they charged roads, utilities, everything to the developer, including even looking at across the board, anything associated. They said, you're putting this in, you're going to take that golf course, you're going to fill it in and start paying it, including, I believe, police force, so it would cost.
Well, I'm not sure exactly what Redmond has done, but I believe the previous City Manager was talking local improvement districts. And to the extent that we have property in that particular area and it's being paid by a local improvement district, an LID, we would be responsible for paying certain portions in relationship to that.
And that's my problem is...
However, Southeast Fourth was not paid for through a local improvement district. It's paid through...
But in this model here, if we were to do...
If you were doing a local improvement district, that is a possibility. However, if we chose a different model, a public-private development agreement, for example, we potentially could upfront developments' cost, but to the extent that it improves city use, then we would have to pay that portion of it. But to the extent that we already have improvements made to city facilities and we don't need any further surface water treatment for city facilities, we wouldn't necessarily have to pay anything for that. So, a lot of it depends on the scope, the scale, and then also the model of financing.
The model of financing to avoid that taking place.
Exactly. Got it?
Thanks, Steve. Sorry to put you on the spot. Just wanted clarification.
Okay, so what I've heard from the rest of the council is yes to question one, consensus yes to question two, and some other questions on what additional information the staff or consulting teams could provide. I will bring up a topic which I've brought up before, and that is, in the Town Center, there are some topographically low areas and some high areas. And lo and behold, the low areas is a logical place to have a stormwater facility. However, our low areas have wetlands, and under current state and federal law, you've got to leave the wetlands alone. Having talked with the EPA last month, they said, well, you can build your stormwater facility next to a wetland, then let the water go into the wetland from the stormwater facility, which of course...
Destroys it.
Yeah, which is kind of silly. It doesn't make common sense. And so, the question might be, are there examples of other municipalities that have somehow gotten around this and use a wetland for a stormwater facility? And I might cite, in case, the City of Lacey in the Hawks Prairie area, where Target has a huge warehouse. Just south of Target Warehouse, there's about a 65-acre parcel, which used to have an isolated wetland, which was expanded into a huge stormwater facility. It's both a combination of retention and detention. And the outlet to that facility is a filtered outlet so that the water comes out of it clean and goes into the tributary of a creek. So, it'd be interesting to see how that happened, and if there are other examples, then we can get creative, because there are certainly some logical places to have a beautiful city facility in the Town Center. And perhaps if there's mitigation required for using a wetland, maybe you can, we can do the mitigation someplace else. So, worth exploring anyway. Are there any other comments? No? Well, thank you very much. A good discussion. Okay. The next discussion is with Forterra, Getting Growth Right: Public Opinion Research. Mr. City Manager?
Well, we are expecting a guest speaker from Forterra. Uh-oh. Do not yet see them here. We're too quick. We're too quick. We're running ahead of schedule, so, one second, please.
Recce. Wait, hold on, he's about to...
Apparently, he's not going to be here until 6 o'clock. So, we have an option to forego it.
Is there a member of the staff that could brief us on what this is all about?
Well, let's see. I think, Jeff, do you feel comfortable getting started on this discussion? Or, actually, the mayor, the mayor actually participated in the meeting. Forterra is trying to work with three, potentially four cities, to have a discussion with the public on getting growth right. And they are working through a survey. Oop, is he here? Oh, beautiful. Perfect timing.
You're late.
Good evening. Fantastic. I won't steal your thunder, so, if you could, over to the podium, that would be ideal. And, let's see, we have Nick Bratton from Forterra here, in a fortuitous bit of timing. So, we're running ahead of schedule, Nick, so thanks for getting here.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate the invitation to come speak to you this evening. Having just arrived, I'm not sure what kind of background.
Well, none.
None? Okay, fantastic. And I'll begin at the beginning and just take off this brief presentation by mentioning that Forterra is part of a group that is leading a public opinion research project that is focusing on residents' perceptions of and desires for growth in eastside cities. So, where this initiative originally sprung from, back in 2015, our organization, with some funding from Amazon, conducted a pretty wide-ranging study of public opinion research on values around growth around the four counties, Puget Sound Regional Council region. And this was about 600 to 700 individuals across all four counties, about an even sample from all of those. And some of the major findings from that research showed us that people really love living in this area, and they enjoy a very high quality of life. And this is very clear contrast, even locally, relative to other parts of the country. There are some of the main concerns that we found, which will really not come as a surprise, is people are worried about transportation, mobility, transit, and the affordability of housing. But something else that we learned, which I think really validates a lot of the work that we've been doing around the region, is that people really care about this place. They love the scenic beauty, they love the healthy environment, they love the opportunities for outdoor recreation, and that really has defined a sense of identity for a lot of people around the region. So, building on that, our President, Jean Duvernoy, was talking to Paul Winterstein, Councilmember of Issaquah, and they were discussing the findings of this research and were curious, is there something unique or substantively different about communities on the east side in which attitudes towards growth might be different? So, out here, we're at the urban rural fringe, there's a rapid growth, and residents may have different priorities around what they want to see in their communities relative to cities on the west side of the lake. So, we launched this public opinion research project specific to eastside cities last fall, and what we've been doing so far is we've created a steering group that includes either elected officials or city managers of the three participating cities so far. So, that includes Kirkland, Redmond, and Issaquah. So, the steering group has been meeting periodically to kind of direct where this body of research is going to go, what kinds of questions we want to ask, and so on. And then also recently, we had a conversation with elected officials from six cities, including Mayor Gernd, and this conversation was really helpful in identifying some of the major issues that these communities face, and helped us kind of narrow the focus of where we want to take the remaining body of work. So, what's happening now is we're starting focus groups. So, this week, we're going to have a series of focus groups in communities around the east side, and these focus groups with residents are informed by the discussion that we had with the elected officials. And what will come after that is we're going to conduct a series of telephone surveys, several hundred people, both in the eastside cities and then some other smaller communities within the area, also further to the east. And as a result of this body of work, our aim is to develop messaging and communication materials to each partner cities that both speaks to the nature of growth as it's perceived collectively, but also specific to each individual city. So, I was invited to speak to City Manager Lyman last week, and we discussed an opportunity for Samamish to join as a partner in this effort. And one of the things we discussed was, what is the value for Samamish to join and what does that involve? So, each of the three cities that are already onboard have funded this work to the tune of $40,000 each. And so, what this gets is the findings of the research, and then also the messaging and communication platform, both across cities and for each specific city. And so, what this can do for Samamish is to inform how the city engages with residents around growth and how it can approach planning as the city continues to transform. And what is the value to the project of Samamish joining the group? Well, currently, we have funding to complete the public opinion research and write up the findings, so we can complete the body of work and say what we found. But what we've heard from the participating cities... But what we've heard from the participating cities, and also from our conversations so far with folks here, is that additional support would allow us to go further and really take the findings to the communities through public events. So we really envision an additional body of work that takes us further, rather than just saying, here's what we heard, but to go out to the communities and have community events that expand the broader understanding of growth-related issues among residents and really give them a path to participate in the planning process. So much more face-to-face public engagement opportunity as a result of that. So that's just a quick overview of what we're doing. And Lyman, perhaps you can elaborate on any further questions that we might have discussed that I didn't touch on, or where you'd like to take this conversation?
No, I think you did a great job of providing an overview. The mayor actually, as you mentioned, was at the elected officials' meeting. And so I'd be interested to, I guess, have the mayor mention or talk about what advantages he might see with the group that is moving forward with Samamish. The group could move forward without us, basically, and continue or stop the process. But we have been having quite a good conversation on growth with our community. It is a very important topic to the folks that we serve. And so I basically just wanted to bring this opportunity to the council to see if there is interest in becoming, I guess, part of the steering committee and continuing this process and taking it further.
Well, you know, we had a productive roundtable on growth. And out of that, we've got some messages that we didn't know before, that indeed, one of the messages I heard from it was that some of the citizens were saying that they're willing to have the city bond to develop the infrastructure to better handle the growth that has occurred sooner rather than later. But what was curious about your focus groups is, it would seem to me that the focus groups, I haven't seen the results of it, but focus groups are going to basically say, yeah, we've got traffic congestion, and we don't like all the houses coming up and the trees coming down. Basically, we heard all that at our roundtable. So the question is, what more is our city going to gain from these messages coming back? I'm guessing the same as the messages we've heard from our citizens already.
That's a great question. I think one of the big challenges we've had as local governments and as a regional sustainability organization, communicating about growth around the region for a long time, is that often we approach it from a very rational, technical, planning perspective in terms of meeting growth targets and satisfying the requirements of the Growth Management Act and infrastructure, and kind of the big chunky, dry elements of what change looks like. And I think the real value of what this project brings is that this allows residents of these cities to talk about growth on their own terms. What is it that they like and don't like? What is it that they care about and don't care about? But they're doing it with their own language. This is not a planning exercise where we're, you know, putting dots on pictures and having surets and going through the public engagement process for the comprehensive planning updates. You know, this very informal, organic set of conversations with very well-informed speaking prompts and questions and lines of inquiry that have evolved with valuable input from the elected officials, you know, that we heard at the meeting in Redmond last month. And so I think what this can really add in terms of value is, we get to hear about growth from the resident's perspective in a very direct and personal way. And that will give local governments in eastside cities some really valuable tools in rethinking how to talk about it in a way that resonates with residents' individual priorities. And that may vary from one city to another. Issaquah, Samamish, Redmond, Kirkland, geographically may not be separated by a lot of distance, but in terms of dynamics and perceptions and attitudes, there may be some variation there that, you know, we're not aware of. So I think this really allows us to get at the specific needs and preferences of the residents in each city. So there's a level of detail that might not have been obvious previously. Does that address your question?
Yes. We have a few others. Tom Odell?
Yeah, thank you. Have the focus groups already been held?
They have not. They will be held this week.
Okay. Do you follow our questions on that subject, then? How many people are in the focus groups? And are they representative of the three cities, or potentially the three cities plus Samamish?
The number of participants in each focus group, I believe, will be between 15 and 20. Forterra is not convening those. We have partnered with a public opinion research consultant called EMC that we've worked with before and have been impressed with their work. So they are handling the focus groups and the opinion polling. So there will be four focus groups in total this week, and that will include residents of Samamish. So the city is in already. And then those focus groups are being broken down. I think one of the major categories by which we're organizing participants is time of residence. So there will be one with folks who've lived in their respective cities for less than five years, and another will have the same content and same discussion, but for residents who've been there for more than five years. So we'll get to see what the differences are between longstanding and more recent arrivals.
Okay. So the focus groups, from listening to you, will be a mixture of people. Each of the four will be a mixture of people from the four communities?
They're going to be geographically specific. So tomorrow's focus groups will be focusing on residents from Redmond and Kirkland.
Okay.
Or actually, maybe the other way around. So there will be one set of focus groups combining Redmond and Kirkland, the other will combine Issaquah and Samamish. But the respondents will all be differentiated by which city they live in and their duration of residence. So we'll know, well, basically, we'll know who's talking, because if someone from Issaquah says they like one thing, and someone from Samamish says they like something else, then we'll know which community that opinion reflects.
Is King County involved at all?
They're not. They are, well, they're involved to the extent that they're aware of this project and they're tracking it, and they're very interested to see the results. But we wanted to just focus this exclusively on cities for the time being. And, I mean, then, and, you know, that's just the scope of what we've identified for now.
And the ultimate audience for this research effort is the local official, or the county official, or state official, or whom?
The primary audience for the findings is going to be the elected officials of the partner cities. And then by extension, we'll also be bringing the messaging to the residents of those cities. So there will really be two audiences. One for the elected officials to better understand what the attitudes and perceptions are of the residents, I mean, for the residents themselves. Here's what we heard from you. Is there anything more? And does this speak to your concerns?
Thank you.
Kristi?
Well, Mayor Gernd asked a lot of my questions, or at least made a lot of the same points that I had as I went through this. And I appreciate you being here tonight, and I appreciate the work that Forterra does. But I feel, my question still is, what do we get out of this that we don't already have? It's obviously, it's not going to be statistically valid, or at least not statistically valid for the city of Samamish, if the focus groups are somewhat mixed. And I feel like we repeatedly hear up here kind of what our residents think of growth. And, you know, the sources that we've had are not necessarily statistically valid either. We've used a virtual town hall, which is an online format where people can give us feedback. And we did one specific to growth. And then I think Mayor Gernd also mentioned a roundtable that we had here where we invited folks to come, and we had a very full room. So it's obviously something that our residents are very passionate about. And I think you touched on it when you mentioned, you know, we're at the edge of the urban growth boundary. And I think, you know, we're kind of that last horizon to be conquered by development. And so I think that's why we're feeling some of those growing pains. But I still feel a little confused, I guess, on what we are going to get. I mean, I know it says we're going to get messaging, but I don't know how that translates. We're going to message out about the growth that we're having, or we're messaging out about what these focus groups are? I'm not quite sure on what that messaging is.
Sure. So maybe I can speak a little bit more to what the final product looks like. So what we've envisioned collectively between Forterra and EMC and the participating cities is, there will be a final written product that has not only just the findings of the research, but also kind of an additional step of synthesis of how can you then speak to communicate with residents about issues of growth in ways that doesn't come across as sounding like speaking from the GMA planning playbook, but being able to really communicate and connect with people on their own terms about what their perceptions are around growth. So, for example, this will have like a series of identifying what people's priorities are. So some of the content of the focus groups, for example, is, there will be an exercise in which, you know, there are cards and concepts written on each, and each participant can rank those in terms of whether they like this or they dislike it, and kind of exploring connections between those. So are you prepared to, are you happy with accepting more growth in your community if it comes with additional public benefits such as affordable housing, or open space, or infrastructure funding, or other things that will help support those? So I think this, not just, it doesn't just get at the, kind of the base-level opinions of, do you like growth, yes or no? But what would make you happy about growth, and what would it look like in a way if you could have your own way about it? So I think there's kind of an additional level of sophistication and synthesis and connection of concepts here that an online survey might not get at. But, so the focus groups are really going to get into depth from the participants, and then those findings will be tested kind of at a broader level among a bigger group of 500 to 600 people through a telephone survey. So I think we're looking at more reliable, statistically significant findings from that group.
Well, I appreciate you going a little, like framing that up a little bit differently. I still feel conflicted about spending $40,000 to do something like this. I'm not sure how the rest of the council feels, but I feel like we've heard from our residents. So...
Okay, we'll get some more opinions. How do you feel, Romero?
Funny you should ask. Yeah, I think this is an important topic. I appreciate your coming out and giving us the presentation. I do think that we are far ahead of our neighboring cities, because as the mayor said, we did have the roundtable. As Chrissy said, we did have the virtual town hall. We also had a community survey that's been out there. We've heard loud and clear from our citizens, I think the problem is that the message across the east side, quite frankly, especially in Samamish, is not a positive one. And when you say, what would make you happy about growth, most will say, no growth. And so how you message back to when you're into that position now because of the speed of the growth that we have, I think that's a difficult one to do, and it's changing day by day. I think as a result of ST3 and Cleary property taxes, I think you'll find that on the social medias in Samamish, there's a lot less appetite now for debt as a result of what's been coming down, even what's going forward. So personally, I don't, I think we're far ahead of our cities that are peer cities in this subject. I mean, I'm still trying to figure out, we got on the community survey, something like only 40% of our citizens are happy with the way that we're dealing with growth. We haven't been able to take that as we were supposed to and turn that around onto the messaging. I think we need to first digest all the material that we have here before we go into another study groups and start calling our citizens. And frankly, I think it may start to annoy a lot of our citizens that we keep asking them questions that they've already answered and we've already had the response to. So I'd be interested to see how the others do, but I think that we're already out of those blocks and, or should be taking, I guess, a more sophisticated approach to answering what we have very concretely already identified. I don't think we need to spend more money on that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Thank you. I'm going to start off by saying that it's really unfortunate, because we may have missed an opportunity a little bit with our neighbors. That, I agree, we are maybe out of the gates already. And the question I have when I was looking at this is, it's hard for us to break ourselves out of Issaquah and Redmond when we talk about growth, but they move forward without talking to us. I think that's a reflection of we're doing a little planning without each other, because the electeds already met. As you said, you've already had meetings with input from the electeds of the other cities around. I fear that we may be too late to really get specifics for Samamish in the data structure. Or what I had written down here is, how will we ensure that our investment is in Samamish data, you know, and it's included in the overall? Because I don't know anything about how it's been collected, or, you know, I suspect that Issaquah and Redmond were looking for information from their citizens when they engaged this. So it's a little unfortunate, because I like the discussion that we're having. It seems like this makes a lot of sense. But again, it may be a little late for us to get the specific data that we would want to get for Samamish in this area. And we may be collecting it on our own with the surveys that we're doing and the online surveys that are ready. So I would be reluctant unless I heard more about what is Samamish really going to get? What specifics are we going to get out of the study for the input?
Thank you. Tom H?
Yeah, I think I'm just kind of weighing in, but I think we, as council, are supposed to be in tune with our citizens. And I think we've taken great strides and expended a lot of money already to do that in the last year, year and a half that I've been on council, to get that communication. So I'm not, I think I'm kind of in the same ballpark camp, that I'm not convinced that this will provide additional information for the money that we'd be spending. However, having said that, you're already including the citizens of Samamish in the focus groups. What happens to that information if we don't participate? Does that dovetail into the Redmond-Issaquah takeaways? Or, I guess I'm asking, why are you including them if we haven't decided to participate yet?
We're including more input from more communities than, who are partnering on the project, because we want to cast a wide enough net that we think is representative of the demographics and the opinions of eastside communities. So for example, at the elected officials' conversation that the mayor participated in, we also had representation from Carnation and from, sorry, from Duval and from North Bend, as well as Samamish and Kirkland and Redmond and Issaquah. So I think that it's important to recognize that even though there may be this geographic and community connection between eastside cities, that they're also kind of at different points along the growth trajectory. And so that's why we included North Bend and Duval in that conversation, because while they're smaller, they're experiencing some really dramatic changes. And we wanted to have that comparison in the context of growth in eastside communities. So even though Samamish may not be, may not choose to be a funding partner, we still want that data point and that contrast to see if there are any kind of unifying themes that do emerge from a broader set of eastside cities.
So are you going to be including Duval and Carnation citizens in the focus groups too, or not?
No, we are not. It's just going to be the four cities mentioned. And the findings are going to be shared. So it's not like we're keeping this as some top secret dossier that...
Well, I don't want to be a freeloader either. I mean, it is good data, obviously, but I think it might be similar to what we've already gotten, so.
Well, I think that, as you heard, we have taken a proactive approach on this topic. And out of that, we have some actions we're moving forward on. One of them being our transportation master plan that we're moving forward, the urban forests, we've made improvements to our tree ordinance. We're looking at street scape approaches. So we are moving forward with implementing ideas and approaches that we heard in our discussion with our community. And we were certainly more than willing to share those approaches with our neighboring cities. So in a sense, it's a given and take, I would say. So that's my point on it. I think that indeed, we haven't been close enough in our discussions with our neighboring cities... I think that, indeed, we haven't been close enough in our discussions with our neighboring cities. We were sort of thrown askance when we found out that Issaquah had a central Issaquah plan for 20,000 more people and 23,000 more jobs a few years ago. And in Redmond, we're trying to work with Redmond and with the state on the 202 corridor. So we are trying to blend our efforts with our neighboring cities out here on the perimeter of the growth management border. I know we do tend to fall back on the Growth Management Act and blame it for everything that happens out here, and it's a good thing to blame. Yeah. And we're working with our legislators to try to get improvements in the Growth Management Act and the approaches from the state level, and at Puget Sound Regional Council. So we, I think I'm hearing a hesitance to join in as an active partner with you, but to continue to carry the discussion both ways.
Right.
Well, tonight is a study session, so council can't actually make a decision, but I think we've heard good input tonight. So just, I wanted to bring it to your attention as an option. Nick, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your time and good questions.
And we think very highly of the work that you and folks at Forterra do, and we very much want to be involved as we all go forward in dealing with the issue of growth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick.
Thank you.
I think that's all we have for the study session tonight.
That is.
And tomorrow night's meeting, by the way, tomorrow at 5 o'clock, there is, again, council open office hours in the back room here, so anybody can drop by and talk with us. Our wide-ranging audience tonight may join us again. And with that, I think we are adjourned.
Thank you.